Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Potowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon. Please arise for a moment of silent meditation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from the City Council meeting of Wednesday, November 6, 2019, and bills for payment on November 15th and 22nd, 2019. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Potowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski.
Do we have anybody here this evening in regards to a repository sale? Hello there.
Hi, my name is Kathy Vasishman, and my husband Quentin and I in the audience would like to purchase the property at 4007 Conrad Road, Erie, PA.
Conrad's by my house.
Could you tell us what your plans are for the property? And if you have the resources and if you have a timeline for completion?
Yes. The plans for the property, we currently live across the street, we live at 4020 Conrad Road. And currently, the condition of the property is it has high weeds, shoulder-high, it has some debris in it, and it's been unmaintained for I don't know how long. We've moved in the neighborhood a year ago. We would like to remove the debris, take down the weeds, plant grass, and maintain the property until further time when we would be in a position to potentially develop it.
So it's a vacant lot then, right?
It is vacant, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Liz, one of the things I heard from a couple of members of the board was to remind people that do this that they need to check with the proper zoning.
I have done that.
Okay.
I've checked with Jake Welsh on zoning, I've checked with Scott Herring Heitzner, rather, I'm sorry, in building and inspections, and I've talked to Mike Hayne in assessments.
I want to bring that up because in the past, a couple of people did some things and they found out they didn't have the, they couldn't, they needed, you know, they needed more, more property or...
Right, the property, they gave me what the dimensions would be for building in the future.
Okay.
And what the stipulations were, so...
You did your homework.
I had lengthy conversations with them.
And is that a standard lot size, or what is the dimension?
I think it's forty by a hundred and twenty-five.
It's pretty standard.
Any other questions, Council? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other repositories?
Craig Ellis, and I'm at 312 East Avenue, and I want to get the lot next to my son's house, 1212, 1228 Buffalo Road.
Okay, and could you tell us what the plans are for your lot, and if you have a timeline and resources to do it?
Yeah, it's just a bigger yard, it's gonna be like a side yard. Clean it up, it's pretty clean now, I've been on it, and I don't even own it.
It's adjacent to your son's?
Yes.
House or property?
Yes. Put a little fence maybe in the springs so the little kids can't run in the streets.
Good.
It's gonna be like a backyard but a side yard.
And you said it's vacant now?
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. Last call for repository sales. Brings those two citizens to be heard. Did have some people who pre-signed in. First one being Kathy Whipple. Does she want to speak tonight?
Good evening, my name is Kathy Whipple, and, do you need my address?
Please.
6072 Hummingbird Court, Erie. I'm here, and bear with me because my computer wasn't working at home, so I'm working from handwritten notes. I'm here along with my sisters to address the current Airbnb issue in the city of Erie. Airbnbs are here to stay, not just in the city of Erie, Erie County, and the state of Pennsylvania, they are countrywide and international. Airbnbs should be regulated, just as rental properties are regulated in the city of Erie. The city has control over how airbnbs can and will be run. Owners of airbnbs should be required to file for a permit in order to operate and pay a filing fee for the same. The city of Erie, as I said, can and should control how airbnbs are operated. Airbnbs should be required to pass inspections, just as rentals are. Examples are working fire detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, fire extinguishers, proper electric outlets, et cetera. Established guidelines, which are extremely important, in order to operate Airbnb efficiently. Again, I offer some examples. No parties, no pets unless the owner of the Airbnb would allow that, excuse me. No loud music, loud cars, these are things that the city can control. And most importantly, consideration of the neighbors and the neighborhood. In our case with the Airbnb, we require at least one review of a prior stay in an Airbnb before we look at the acceptance of the guest. And most importantly, meet the guest personally at your home, absolutely no lock boxes. Should violations occur, and I give, again, I use this as an example, if there are two noise complaints, a fine could be determined by the city. If there are three violations of any kind, rescind the permit for six months and levy a fine. For five violations, and I'm just using this as examples, the permit is rescinded for a year, and a fine is imposed, and they would need to reapply for the operation. The issue here, in our case, is the R1 residential area. There should be a compromise with the city in order to accommodate some of the airbnbs by allowing a specific number of airbnbs in specific areas of R1 areas. The amount of pleasure that Airbnb provides to the guests, families, and friends visiting Erie cannot be measured. This issue regarding airbnbs needs to be addressed so that the city of Erie can move forward and showcase all that the city has to offer in a progressive manner, just as Erie is trying to do in other parts of the city. I thank you for your time and hope to meet with you again as this issue moves forward in a progressive and nonpartisan manner.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lucinda Mauer.
Hi. So you need my name and address?
Please.
Lucinda Mauer, it's M-A-U-R-E-R, 5833 Mill Street in Erie, 16509. So, since you didn't let my sister speak first, Susan, because she had all the financial things, I'm a little...
Just going by the order.
Mixed up, I know. I don't want to read that letter to you again, I don't want to bore you with that again. But I will say that we have been operating the Airbnb, and as I stated earlier, we have had, in the past three and a half years, over 3,000 guests in that period of time. They have been lovely families who have come here for graduations, weddings, funerals, just to enjoy what Erie has to offer. They prefer to stay in an Airbnb as opposed to a noisy hotel with cramped-in space, only one bathroom. Most of the people that have come to our house have roots here in Erie and family ties. And the people that do come here that are tourists, they enjoy Prescott, Waldemar, our zoo, the wine tours, all that Erie has to offer. Many of our guests have stayed with us on more than one occasion. We have a family that's been coming every, for three years now, starting in October, coming until March. Their son plays hockey at Mercyhurst College, and they come to Erie for all the home games. They're like family to us now, I mean, just, they take care of our home, they love coming to it, and they love hanging out with us, I mean, we spend a lot of time with them now. Guests report feeling more like locals when they stay at our Airbnb, and they like feeling that way. I really feel the city of Erie should embrace this opportunity and welcome past residents back to Erie and tourists and visitors. Since I already read you the letter, I would like to read you this one review from this family that came here from Chicago so his wife could have surgery. "When my wife was scheduled to have surgery at Erie's UPMC Hamlet Hospital, I found and booked this house, hoping it would provide a quiet, more comfortable place to relax and recuperate than a hotel room. Boy, was I right. The house is extremely clean, comfortable, and well-kept. Our host met us at check-in to make sure that we had everything we needed, and even left flowers for my wife and delicious homemade muffins. She also texted us to check in throughout to see how our stay was and to make sure that my wife was recovering and comfortable, which was very thoughtful. With my mother-in-law staying with us and other family also in town having a big space where we could all gather throughout the week instead of cramming into a hotel room and cook meals instead of eating out all week, made a world of difference for us. The house is also located in a very nice, quiet neighborhood that made it easy to get outside for a walk or a run and sit out on the back porch to relax in the evening. I can't recommend this house enough. As we come back to Erie, hopefully, under different circumstances, we would definitely stay here again." And also, just, I won't read her review, but one of the very first people we had that stayed in the house was a family from New York City, and their mother had just died. And she was, the family was from Erie originally, and so they came back here for their mother's funeral, and the review was just, I mean, it was wonderful for them. So this is what Airbnb does, not only for the families that come here, but it's what it does for Erie. It makes Erie look good. So I hope that you will consider it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We have Susan Morse.
My name's Susan Morrison, I live at 4706 Upland Drive in Erie, PA. The residence of our Airbnb. And we are Airbnb hosts. And we're here because we really would want the city to get an ordinance for us, where we're operating legally and for other people in our areas as well, because we are in an R1 district, and currently, the city has a ban on that. We're being able to operate because we're under an appeal. And they handle these cases one by one, and what would happen is that in order to keep the airbnbs either shut down or going, we only address them one at a time. So the only way to find out if somebody has an Airbnb is if someone complains. I mean, there's not enough zoning officers to patrol this. And airbnbs are growing exponentially. It's a 40 billion company that's going public next month. And in this, in the Erie surrounding areas, the airbnbs have gone from 100 airbnbs three years ago to over 300 now. And at the same time, when they're banned, the city's still collecting taxes on them, which is sort of, that's what's happening. So it needs an ordinance, it needs to be something neat and tidy. There are some facts on airbnbs that I thought were interesting to give you more of the impact that they have. They're listed in 191 countries. The total listings are 4 million, that's higher than the top major hotels combined. And airbnbs only make a small dent on short-term accommodations. The average guest stays two times longer than a typical visitor to a city. What's as important as the average Airbnb, or the Airbnb guest spends two and a half times more money than any visitor to a city. Seventy-four percent of the properties are located outside of hotel districts. Ninety-one percent of the people who stay at an Airbnb want to live like a local, that's why they stay in the airbnbs. Eighty-one percent share their home they live in. Fifty-three percent of hosts say that it helps them stay in their home. So as they're a host, it enables them to pay for essentials, for groceries, and 48 percent of those hosts say that they're able to pay their own rents and mortgages. Airbnbs, the whole city benefits from it, on a cultural exchange as well. So those are just the, some of the statistics. The economic impact is, is what's outstanding. And this is, these numbers are so low because the growth of airbnbs, it's a trailing, compounding, tripling effect. But if we just look back in the last 12 months, the state of Pennsylvania would have collected $376 from these operating airbnbs only in Erie, and for, and the city would get $439,000. Income generated from the airbnbs in Erie's equal about $6,238,000. And if you look at the ancillary, which is, is really Airbnb and many sites, home-sharing sites, give us formulas, but we underestimated for, for you, but the impact is enormous. Gas stations, $477,000. Grocery stores, $1,060,000. State stores, $500,000. Drugstores, $500,000. Retail stores, $1.2 million. Local boutiques are our local shops, $790,000. Amusement parks, festivals, $300,000. So the total visitor spending, and this, these, I'm not talking about, well, geez, if they stayed at a hotel, they'd still spend this money, these are statistics that Airbnb has shown that just staying, these are, these are numbers. But the economic impact for a year is $11 million of revenue that isn't regulated. Airbnb, the good part about this, it enables us to be more competitive by attracting skilled workers, incentivizing relocation with innovative short-term stays. And you look at also on the Airbnb sites, if you're staying at an Airbnb, you can sign up for an activity. It's more employees, you know, you could have people taking people fishing or cooking classes. And really, the high season of airbnbs doesn't compete because people stay there, again, for graduations and, and...
Ma'am.
Funerals, that's it.
Your turn.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, thank you very much. I think we got our point across.
Do we have any other citizens to be heard this evening? Mr. Johnson.
Johnny Johnson, 223 Walnut, Erie, PA. Good evening, City Council members. In 1994, a diversified group of Erie citizens who were both lovers of history and lovers of music led by Charles Kennedy Jr., formed the Heritage Burles Society, whose mission was twofold. One, to educate citizens of our community to reason the nation about the life and legacy of Heritage Burley. Two, to bring Erie's only African-American hero from an unmarked grave in White Plains, New York, to a place of honor in his beloved town. These two were accomplished, but there was a major goal still to be achieved, and that was to honor Heritage Burley, our hometown hero and world-renowned singer, composer, publisher, and humanitarian with a tribute worthy of his achievements. In 2016, which was to be the 150th anniversary of Burley's birthday, I, as a spokesman from the then Heritage Burles Society, encouraged City Council to proctor a resolution to honor Burley with December 2nd being recognized as Heritage Burley Day in his hometown, in which we believe would be the culmination of the efforts spearheaded by the now-deceased Charles Kennedy Jr. In 2016, that did not come to fruition, and some of you were present during that presentation. In the words of Brutus, "I am not here to bury City Council, but rather to praise City Council." If I could paraphrase Langston Hughes' poem, "A Dream deferred," I would say, "What happens to a dream deferred? It can ultimately be referred and become a reality." I know with assurance that Charles Kennedy Jr. and those of reading the board members who are no longer with us witness to night occurrence are rejoicing with the present members of the newly-formed Burley Legacy Alliance and are thanking you for knowledge in Erie's hometown hero, and also those who worked so diligently to bring this to pass. As the current president of the Burley Legacy Alliance, I personally applaud and thank you, as well as our current board members, for bestowing this honor on Heritage Burley. If I may offer parting thought to all those who sit in a seat of power in these critical times that we are currently living in and where political expediency takes precedent over moral justice, that we always remember the words of Martin Luther King Jr. when he said, "The time is always right to do the right thing." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and friends. Tonight, I'm here for a short session.
Jim, could you please...
Questions on...
Could you please state your name and address, please?
Sure, by now, I figured everybody knew who the band was. Jim McGoy, 7 West 41st.
Thank you.
I'm here to discuss three areas of concern in the budget. Number one is the garbage department. It looks like we're in for an increase this year, but my question is why? Ten years ago, I came in here with the same question. Why don't we pick up the garbage during the day? The figures that I have from 10 years ago, it costs $382,000, excuse me, $282,000 we paid to the transfer station that year. Now, the transfer station is a facility that the garbage trucks use to dump the garbage when the landfill's not open. So obviously, if the landfill's open during the day, which it is, and we're picking up garbage during the day, we wouldn't be paying that transfer tax. As I said, the last year, I had figures for this, was about 10 years ago, was $282,000, plus the shift differential for the employees amounted to about $40,000. So you're talking ballpark, $325,000. Now, I don't expect you to have everything at fingertip, but it's an area of concern. It's something I think we should look into. The parking authority, looks like there's an issue there too. I have one question. Why is there a city employee with a salary of $90,000 to $100,000 booting cars for the parking authority? Booting is putting the mechanical bracket on the wheel so they can't drive the car. The last area I guess we can defer from, since the mayor has abandoned his tax hike for this year. But Mayor, you and Mrs. Allen and I have some unfinished business along those lines, and I don't want it to drag into the next election. So we will address that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens to be heard this evening?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm George Deitch, I'm the executive director of the Erie County Historical Society. I'm not sure if my timing is here, but I did want to follow Johnny in regards to the resolution you have in regards to Harry Burley. As you know from your own resolution, Harry Burley had an outstanding impact on the nation and internationally. And as a native of Erie, we don't recognize him here much. We have one sign, and the Burley Society here is standing back up to do more. Their work is strongly supported by the Historical Society, and I think it would be a proper thing for you to do is to recognize Mr. Burley on his December birthday and make that just not a one-year item, but make it something in perpetuity so that we can, as a city and as a county, help to celebrate his legacy. And it is an important legacy. So I would speak strongly in support of your resolution, which is coming up later in your agenda. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard this evening? Hearing none, Rose shall move on.
Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 16127, official ordinance number 662019. An ordinance closing and vacating a portion of a public alleyway at the request of the Glenwood United Methodist Church located on property at 2931 Myrtle Street, Erie, between Myrtle and West 29th Street, running parallel to Peach Street with reservation of existing utility rights of way. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mr. Potowski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16127, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 662019, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Potowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council Passs Official File Ordinance Number 662019, finally, by a seven, nay zero. Council File 16128, official ordinance number 672019. An ordinance, excuse me, appropriating the sum of $15,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Contribution is from the Mercy Terrace Apartments for the purchase of police fire and winter maintenance equipment. By Mr. Potowski and seconded by Mr. Jones, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16128, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 672019, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Potowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council Passs Official File Ordinance Number 672019, finally, by a seven, nay zero. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 672019, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File 16129, official ordinance number 682019, an ordinance amending, ordinance number 261958, the traffic code of the city of Erie by the installation of stop signs at three intersections, West 43rd and Melrose, West Lakeview Boulevard and State Street, Prospect Avenue, and Cameron Street. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Schaff, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16129, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 682019, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 682019, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File 16130, official ordinance number 692019. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $72,040 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from PennDOT. The funds will be used to carry out the LED replacement for railroad preemption signing project through the 2018 automated red light enforcement funding program. The project includes replace the railroad preemption signs located Bayfront NE 6, Bayfront NE State, Bayfront NE 10th, and the intersection of Bayfront Connector and McClellan Avenue. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Schaff, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16130, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 692019, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 692019, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16131, official ordinance number 702019. An ordinance requiring childcare facilities to obtain an annual childcare facility certificate of occupancy. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Jones, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16131, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 702019, be finally passed by the City Council.
Mr. President, this is where I'd like to speak. I had suggested at the last meeting that we develop an FAQ about this ordinance, and I put together the frequently asked questions that I would ask if I were either a parent looking for a childcare facility or somebody operating a childcare facility. So I would just like, it doesn't have to be exactly what I suggested here, but I think it's really important that there be a lot of communication about what this ordinance means. So I just want to read the FAQ that I put together. Number one, what type of childcare centers need to be inspected? Are there different requirements depending on the number of children at my center? Are there different requirements depending on whether I provide daytime or overnight or 24-hour care? Number four, how often must my childcare center be inspected? Number five, will the state inspection and the Erie Bureau of Fire inspection be conducted at the same time? Why or why not? Number six, is there a fee for the city inspection? I realize that we've been told that there won't be a fee, but I think people are going to wonder this. Number seven, what is the deadline or grace period to install smoke detectors? Number eight, will I be notified in advance that an inspection will occur? Number nine, what does it mean that smoke detectors have to be connected? Number 10, can my current smoke detectors be connected into one system? Number 11, how much will it cost to have my smoke detectors connected? Number 12, what if I cannot afford an upfront cost to have my smoke detectors connected? Because we have heard figures as high as $1,500 to have these systems installed, and Sonia Arrington had suggested perhaps there might be grants out there. I think if there are going to be grants, I can't imagine that they would go to individual daycare operators. It might have to go through some type of nonprofit that would be able to make sure that these systems are in place. Number 13, will my smoke detectors be tied into an alarm system? And the reason I put this in is because at our budget session the other day, we talked about possible fees for false alarms. So number 14, if so, what if I have a false alarm for my fire detection system? Number 15, will the inspection reports be available for potential clients to view? Number 16, if so, where will this documentation be maintained and updated? And number 17, this is more a question not for an FAQ, but what kind of educational outreach will be provided to make sure that current and future providers are aware of these requirements? So I'm hoping, I mean, I, no, I don't expect us, I think this is something where it's questions that I think that the administration is going to have to make sure that there's an FAQ on this, and to make sure that there's educational outreach, and to figure out what those costs are going to be and how people are going to pay for it, so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would unusually concur with everything she just said. No, seriously, I think there's some significant concerns. I think the challenge with tragedy is that we have a sometimes knee-jerk response to it, and although very necessary to make sure that our childcare centers, they take care and serve our most valuable parts of our community, our children, but I think at the same time, we have to realize that when we cast a broad net, there's going to be some fish that we don't expect to get in the mix of that. And so, we're talking childcare centers, but that's different than a home childcare provider that's maybe overnight. There's a lot of nuance, and so I do agree with many of the things, in all seriousness, that Ms. Allen is proposing that as we move forward with this ordinance, as we move forward into implementation, that we do have the right information provided to service or childcare providers, and maybe, I have talked to a few of them since our last meeting, and there's maybe some room or some conversation around, you know, coming together and doing some pooling of resources for themselves, but also that information sharing. Some groups are larger, more astute, if you would, to catch these little ordinances and all these changes. Some are not, and so they're looking at doing some partnerships there, if that could happen. So again, just want to echo in the sentiments of Ms. Allen around making sure that this information gets to our childcare providers, making sure that it's done properly and with fidelity, and done in a very open way and supportive way. So I just wanted, again, to echo those things, because again, it's not okay to shut down a childcare facility if that's the only place that a family has to have their child taken care of, or where they're comfortable. So I think all those nuances are important.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Roll call. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 702019, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16132, official ordinance number 712019, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $200,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received as a redevelopment assistive capital program grant from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Office of the Budget, which will be utilized for the renovation and associated with construction of the JMC ice arena. By Curtis. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16132, and now known as Official File Ordinance 712019, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 712019, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council File 16133, official ordinance number 722019, appropriating the sum of $136,932 to be received from the U.S. Department of Justice as an innovations in community-based crime reduction program grant, and will be utilized to focus on Erie Eastside neighborhood crime reduction. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16133, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 722019, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Just very quickly, I'm not against this, obviously. I signed on sponsorship, but I think it's very important that when we're talking about bringing in grant money or any monies into the city to deal with some of our most challenging issues, for example, dealing with crime, or more so, hopefully, community-based crime reduction, that I get the point of studies. I know that studies are significant and important, and we have to have best practices, and I get all of that, but I don't want that money to go to studies that never translate into real work, that never translate into what they're supposed to study and reduce. And so I just wanted to take this moment to just kind of just say that out loud again, is that it would be great to see a lot of this money and the monies, grant funds that are coming in, to actually be invested. I think we're pretty clear, it doesn't take, my mom, my mom used to, and grandmother, they used to talk about a concept called mother wit. Some things you just naturally know what causes crime. You're hungry, you're hopeless, and you're hurting. And so I get, we need to study that, but I also hope that we can implement some programs and put some things in place that deal with hunger, hopelessness, and hurt in our community, so that we can actually have some significant crime reduction and improvement. Last thing, not to be preachy, but there's a passage in an old book, some people call the Bible, is a guy named David. He said, "If I get too hungry, I'll steal." And so I think, to my point, we need to, there's some social challenges that we need to deal with that will naturally deal with the issue of crime reduction, and I just don't want studies done and no real work done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Winarski. City Council Pass Official File Ordinance Number 722019, finally by a seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading, Council File Number 16134, and an ordinance fixing the tax rate for all city purposes for the fiscal year beginning on January 1st, 2020, and ending on December 31st, 2020.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to propose that we table this and the next ordinance, based on my experience. First of all, we still have time to get this done in December. When I was a novice last year, and everybody said, "Oh, you have to pass it on first reading, and then you can make changes," and nothing changed. We are still doing our study sessions. We had a study session, we just got new information last week in which the property tax rate hike was gone. I don't know what the rush is on this, and I'm not comfortable setting the tax rates, especially since on one of the tax rates, like, I know the people who've been on council before, I think kind of understood what was going on with all the .65 and the .5, and we're taking this away and we're putting this up. Anyhow, I don't know why we would be voting on this tonight when we haven't had our third study session tomorrow. So I propose that we, I don't know if I can propose, do I have to propose that we table each one separately? Or, okay, I propose that we table this until our next regular, well, I mean, until our next regular meeting, which was the first, whatever, the first Wednesday in December.
Mr. President, I'd have to agree with Liz. I think there's been a lot reported in the paper about things we're going to do. Nothing's been decided. This is still before council. This is a proposal by the administration. We've been given two proposals, really, in a short time, and we don't really know what we're going to do yet, so I think as long as we got the, we got two meetings in December, I think I'd be in favor of being a little cautious and seeing what direction we're going, rather than listen to the media, which has reported that everything is already done, and it hasn't, it isn't. You know, it's still to be determined.
Are you seconding this motion?
You can second.
I'll second. Mr. President, I'd like to second that motion for both. Can that include both ordinances, or do we have to do that separately?
I think we have to do it separately, Mr. President.
Okay. So I would second the motion to table the first reading of this first item under new ordinance.
And we should let people know, I mean, we're making progress. We have this earlier than we did last year, but this isn't a signal about ultimately what would happen, but.
And I'll second the second one, okay? So we just, when it comes to that. No, I agree with you, Liz. I think it's premature because...
And I want people to understand, too, though, after the first reading, first reading just sort of gets the ball rolling, so when the second reading, we don't have to just say we don't pass this budget till the 10th hour or the end of December. We don't have to have special meetings to have a first reading and a second reading. And changes have been made to budgets in my tender here on council in between a first reading and a second reading, including last year, there were changes after the first reading. So with that being said, if you guys want to table it, we'll vote on that, and then we'll move on.
And we don't, yeah, we aren't talking about 10th hour, because we did get it earlier, so we still have two regular meetings in December.
Okay, then, motion to table, Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Jones. Ms. Allen?
Table, yes.
Mrs. Arrington?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Kwiatowski? Mrs. Schaff? Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Mr. Winarski?
No.
All right, this motion will adopt five to two. And then we'll have Council File Number 16135, an ordinance of the city of Erie, county of Erie, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, adopting the general fund and other certain budgets for fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2020. Discussion?
I propose that we table this for the same reasons that we mentioned in the first ordinance.
Kaz, you're going to second?
Yeah, I second it.
All right, there's a motion to table by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Arrington?
Yes.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Kwiatowski? Mrs. Schaff? Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Mr. Winarski?
No.
This motion will adopt five to two. Council File Number 16136, an ordinance of the City Council of this city of Erie, determining to incur lease-rental debt evidenced by the guaranteed revenue note in the maximum principal amount of $32 million to be authorized and issued by Erie City Water Authority in connection with the construction alteration and improvements to the public water distribution facilities in and about this city, including but not limited to the Cherry Street Pump Station and Profi Improvement Projects, and paying related cost fees and expenses specifying the realistic useful life of the project, authorizing and directing appropriate officers of the city to take certain actions and to execute certain documents, including a guarantee agreement between the city as guarantor and the Erie City Water Authority and the Pennsylvania Industry Infrastructure Investment Authority, approving the form, maximum guarantee amounts and sources of payment of the guarantee agreement, creating a sinking fund in connection with such guarantee obligations, and appointing a sinking fund depository, and providing for the repeal of all inconsistent ordinances for parts of ordinances. By Ms. Schaff, seconded by Ms. Allen, the Council File Ordinance Number 16136, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16136 by a seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File 16137, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $500,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received as an ARC appellations... anticipated revenue to be received as an ARC Appalachian Regional Commission Power 2019 grant through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This grant will be utilized to purchase the systems necessary to deploy free public Wi-Fi in the city's eight opportunity zones. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kowalski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16-137, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16-137 by a seven, nay zero,
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
I'd like to second it.
I would like to make a separate thing for number two, please.
Which one?
Any other separation?
Number two, under new business?
Yes.
Got it.
Okay.
No other separations? Moving the balance of the agenda, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. By Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Ms. Allen, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, whereas the City Council of the City of Erie wishes to pay special tribute to Harry Thacker Burley on the occasion of his 153rd birthday for his contributions, demonstrating the pinnacle of an Erie-born success through achievements in the performing arts and fostering the next generation of African-American artists, whereas Harry T. Burley, a third-generation free man born in Erie, PA on December 2nd, 1866, was a renowned composer, singer, music editor, and mantner both in Erie and on the world stage. Whereas Harry Thacker Burley, 1866 to 1949, is an international treasure and local exemplar of cultural and artistic success. Burley made black music available to classically trained artists by introducing them to spirituals, which he arranged as art songs. Whereas Harry T. Burley was a titan of American cultural arts, composing highly regarded and often performed art songs, editing the American music of a prolific publishing house and leading the way in arranging and performing spirituals with more than 60 solo and choral settings, including "Deep River." Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that this commendation is hereby presented to the Burley Legacy Alliance President, proclaiming that December 2nd hereforth will be known as Harry T. Burley Day in the City of Erie. We encourage all Erie residents to celebrate the legacy of Erie's native son.
Mr. President, I just wanted to point out that there are going to be a number of really exciting activities connected to this event. There'll be things at the library on December 2nd, December 5th, a panel discussion at the library, December 6th is when, Friday, December 6th, I think it'll be at the same night as Downtown Delights, that the historic plaque is going to be unveiled, and then during gallery night, that same night, there's gonna be a tribute concert at St. Paul Cathedral. And then I also found out just shortly before I came to the meeting tonight, that there's going to be a pop-up bookstore with books and music available for a couple of days in December. One of the things I was looking at is that there's some other stuff going on at the same time, but when I talked to Cheryl Rush-Dix, who's also part of the Legacy Society, she said, "What this will do is that this is gonna be perpetual, so that we're gonna know from now on that Harry Burley Day in Erie is going to be that first week in December." And this is a great effort on the part of everybody who has carried on the legacy of Charles Kennedy Jr., and as Johnny mentioned, and George mentioned, a treasure from Erie that we haven't really had a chance to appreciate. So there's, this is the start, not the, not the end, of a wonderful, wonderful process that we're, and celebration that we're gonna have in Erie. And Kathy, thank you for separating it, too, so we could make note of those things, so...
Mr. President?
Yes.
Liz, this is not the first time Mr. Burley was honored. Quite a few years ago, when my two daughters danced with the Bayfront Ballet, and there was a director by the name of Sharon Battles. They actually had the Burley Ballet, which, I think I still have a copy of it on VCR, although I don't know if the music still exists, but they did a nice show, and for a number of years, they used to perform it both at Pittsburgh, at the, there was a minority festival down there. They took that show on the road to, I think, Massachusetts, the Jacob's Pillow area, and they used to perform it on many occasions, but my good friend George Dace is right. When we first pulled that out, a lot of people didn't know who Harry Burley was, had no idea. What's really scary, though, and Curtis is gonna kill me, I just realized that Harry Burley died in modern times, one year before, actually, one year after I was born, so...
Oh, man.
I think, except for Mel and I, you know...
Well, the street lights, then.
Yeah. No, it's hard to imagine that, when you look at Harry Burley, and you, the span, the career that this man had, he was born right after the American Civil War, probably saw a lot of changes in, just the way the town developed and the world in general, and died in 1949. And I think about it, I said, I was too young to remember, but I remember people talking about him, but the only thing we knew was, there was a sign down there by Erie Insurance somewhere, I think it is, right? And that was it, and some people would remember, well, he did a few spirituals and stuff like that, but he never really got to, we don't really honor the people in our hometown sometimes, but I hope they could find that Burley Ballet, and maybe if not this year, someday in the future, bring that back. I'm sure Sharon Battles, if she's, I think she's in Harrisburg, she may have the choreography for that, but that was quite interesting.
That's cool.
All right, roll call.
Well, Mr. President, if I could, I was moving slow, I apologize.
[laughing]
It's unusual. Oh, yeah, postmodern, obviously. I, I think it's important that we are doing this, as to Mr. Johnson's point, overdue in many ways, to Mr. Kowalski's point, probably under-recognized in many ways. So many, you know, great things that Erie T. Burley has brought to the world as an Erieite. Can't be too much of a mistake on a lake to produce greatness like this. I think that's important to say, but I think it's also important to say that there are people who are still alive today, who carry that mantle, and I think carry that tradition and make sure that the tradition doesn't die. I think, I think it was Mr. Johnson, who was a historian and an educator, and, you know, many, many positive things. I think he was making some quotes earlier, I was thinking about the Brutus speech, and, you know, "The evil that men do," you know, being buried, oh, excuse me, the, what is it, "The good that men do is buried with them, the good is..." Let me say it back, let me say it right. "The evil that men do lives after them, the good is oft interred with their bones." I think this is an opportunity to allow Mr. Burley's good to not be interred with his bones, but to stay alive in our community. And so I want to honor Mr. Johnson and all those who have worked in this community to keep his good alive and relevant, and young black children in this community, and I'll just be very direct, need to know who Harry T. Burley and many others were, because if you don't know, you come from greatness, then you will oft be less than great. And so I think this is important, it's not just ceremonial. I think we should really make this a significant part of our Erie, celebration of Erie's greatness in as many ways as possible. And then my final thing, the Kennedy family is a family of notes and a family of, of great reputation in Erie. And so it's kind of, maybe ironic, but maybe not so much, that Mr. Kennedy, Charles, Mr. Charles, 'cause I can never just call him Charles, 'cause that's Mr. Charles, Kennedy would have been someone who represented Harry T. Burley in music and in song and in thespian activity. And so, to that family as well, Mother Kennedy, Father Kennedy, their legacy, well, she's still here, but legacy of father in that family lives on, and I'm just excited about this, I want to try to make everything I can to celebrate. And again, I'll be very direct, it's important, marketing is important, and if we don't show young children of color, but also young children that are not black, that what you see on TV, the stereotype, isn't reality. I think it's a beautiful opportunity for us to do this in a historic way, in a significant way. So, I got a little preachy, I apologize, but I was kind of feeling all those emotions, because I remember Mr. Kennedy sitting and playing on his porch, I had the privilege of being on his porch one day, him and his wife, at some birthday party for one of the grandchildren, and so that's real life, and so thank you all for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I'll take that off my, I'll take that off my, my report time.
Mr. President, one day I'll learn to go before Councilman Jones, who usually covers just about everything and more that I had on my mind. I just want to say kudos to Mr. Johnson, who I refer to as Teacher Johnson, he had my son when he was in, when he was teaching. And he came to Erie and took the bull by the horns, and made, and brought black history to the forefront, and I'm grateful for that, and I'm sure many people are. But he never asked for any kudos, he doesn't look for it, he does do what he feels is necessary for the people of City of Erie. And it's an outstanding committee, they do a fine job, they keep issues to the forefront, and if you don't know your history, then you don't have a good path of where you're going. And I want to thank Mr. Johnson, better known as Teacher Johnson to me, for all he has done for the city. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Roll call. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarsky. This resolution is seven to zero, and that will take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. In all seriousness, I appreciate all the work that this council is doing, and of course the administration is doing and continuing to do with this budget. My vote to table this was not an indictment on anyone, but I think it's important to, because we have time, to take our time, because we have it. And of course, as Mr. Winarsky, Mr. President, said, I've seen things change in between first and second readings, but also have seen them not, you know, so, but either way, for me, it wasn't that, that wasn't why I voted for it. I just think that we haven't had our, all of our scheduled study sessions yet, you know, and so that was, it was more of a principle point for me in relation to that, because I think, you know, the, kind of the buzz is, it's not gonna be an easy budget deliberation process as we move forward. So, again, I just wanted to kind of clarify that. Again, I said what I said about Mr. Burley and all the component parts of this resolution that we passed this evening. I'm honored to be a part of this council that did do that, and honored to have my name on it before I finish my tenure at the end of this year. I will ask this question, and I was a little bit hesitant, and I don't necessarily need an answer, but I will ask it again in our deliberations tomorrow, in relation to no tax increase. Now, this is a little, maybe a little bit of a crazy question for an elected official, and some might say, "Well, you obviously aren't running next year for anything," but I understand all the things that we're doing long-term, and no one likes tax increases, property tax increases, but I'm worried that deferring this year makes it multiple times worse in a year or a year and a half from now, to be perfectly honest. And I won't be here on this council, maybe I'll be, you know, I'll be in the community, I'll, you know, bringing some ideas or something, I don't know, but my, I'm leery to be comfortable, because moving forward, yet we, and this is separate from Water Authority, $90 million, except for $5 million of that $90 million is going to balance our budget this year. I'm concerned about that. When I, one of the biggest things that we talked about when I was a young councilman, younger council member, was filling budgets with one-time revenue sources, and we're doing that with two, two times with this coming budget, in relation to property lien sale, or, excuse me, a tax lien sale, and this $5 million infusion from the $90 million that's coming from the Water Authority. So next year, we've got a significant and larger gap, because everything costs more the next year. I'm concerned, and I, again, I don't want to raise, nobody wants to raise taxes, but I'm concerned that if not raising taxes this year makes it that much harder on the citizen in the next year or two, because we're talking .75 mils, which is $75 on $100,000 assessed property, et cetera, et cetera, but what does that turn into in a year from now, when everything gets larger, the gap gets bigger, the costs get more increased? Just a point to, of conversation, and something that I really would love to hear, the long-term strategy, the next couple of year strategy from the administration, because respectfully, the $90 million besides the budget fill this year doesn't affect our annual general fund or general budget deficit that we always have. So I just want to kind of throw those talking points out, those are some things I'm interested in getting information on over the next couple of sessions as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Kowalski?
I'd like to say that it was a busy week, two weeks, actually. We were proud to march in the Veterans Day Parade and attended ceremony at Jefferson School. It was a pleasure being with my fellow veterans, and it was a great parade. I met with the Parking Authority this week, and nothing new to add there about the, this, the ongoing discussion about their contribution or not, we're waiting to see what happens there. The aggregate board of the pension met, the value of the fund right now is about $274.8 million, with a year-to-date rank around the country, we are in the top seven. So we're doing rather well, even in the troubling times. The Investment Committee meeting was also held this week. The Water Reserve is presently valued at $12.5 million, and with a 7% assumption rate on that fund, we're actually doing better than we expected, and we just today allocated $503,000, I think, into the capital fund out of that fund. So when I argued with the mayor at the budget sessions about, if we do accept a little payout from the advanced payout, I do think some of that should go into the Water Reserve Fund, because as that fund grows, we take 4% out of that to give to the city each year. That $500,000 could be a lot more, which will bring me up to my final argument. We also attended the Thursday Veterans Appreciation Brunch at the YMCA at Glenwood, I'd like to thank that staff. There was a lot of fellow veterans there that had a good time conversing. Met today with the Airport Authority, and they are proud to say that they are ahead of their projections, actually about 10 years ahead. They're getting a lot more boardings this year than they expected. They're about to release their report on long-range enhancements for the terminal, and I want to remind people that if you haven't got your real ID license, you better get around to it, because if you plan on doing any flying, crossing the border, or anything, you might be caught taking a flight out and not being able to take a flight in. So make sure you, if you need a real ID, that you get it. Also, the TSA Pre-Check, which they offered earlier this year, will probably be offered again in about five or six months. And in my remaining time, I'd like to support Councilman Jones... And in my remaining time, I'd like to support, uh, Councilman Jones. I too have concerns about taking upfront money and paying it off on one time. Uh, I've said for years that in a few, in a year or so, we're going to be trying to figure out how we're going to pave roads again. And I hope it's not through a bond issue, because if we're planning on paying down the bond issue, and then we're going to reissue another one, we're just repeating the old mistakes, and we're kicking the can down the road. I know this is unpopular, and Curtis said it, and I've said it for years. I think the public, if we were honest with them and said, I think they all realize that things go up, your utility bill goes up and everything else. If we were to do moderate tax increases, which this council has suggested, and then explain to the public why we do it, and if we have to have a little levy to pay for roads, so be it. Because I'd rather know that I'm paying a quarter mil, a half a mil, or whatever it takes to fix the roads and have a long-term plan, rather than nilly-milly always. Well, I guess I come with a compliment. But, uh, I don't, I don't believe that, uh, we should kick the can down the road any longer and float bond issues where we, we don't need to. And, uh, quite frankly, going forty-two years without a return from the Water Authority kind of scares me. Now, it's only, it's going to be three to four million a year, I believe, in the future. But forty-two years, a whole generation of kids is going to grow up, and we're going to handcuff a, a council and future mayors to take care of, to take care of our debt now. But that's assuming we don't float any more debt, and the debt ain't going away, we're only taking it down a little bit. I think it, it'd be more prudent for us to really start looking at what we can do around here, to start collecting the revenue we don't collect, and to start, uh, and to start taking steps to close a lot of gaps that we should be. Uh, I, I would go for a shorter-term lease, I think, but I, I think as scary as a tax increase is, I think it may be necessary on a small scale to attack and be relevant and be, and to deal with our problems in a, in a proper manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kretowski.
No, no report. I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy your family and friends.
Ms. Schaff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the people who came today and spoke, and, uh, I am very excited to, uh, pass this along to people and get the word out about Harry T. Burley Week. And, um, I'm hoping to attend as many events as I can. So thank you, Johnny Johnson, and all the people involved who, uh, were able to get this going. Thank you. Years ago, when my daughter was in seventh or eighth grade, they had a project, and they had to do a display about historic landmarks. So it was really interesting. They did this trifold, and my daughter had her picture taken on the different ones. So I remember reading about him way back in the day, but, um, those historic markers are good. We, we should have like a walking tour of our Erie history. I attended the Fair Housing Workshop and, uh, was informed about fair housing, and that helped me with, um, being the liaison for the HRC Advisory and Commission. I attended the Water Authority meeting and the zoning hearing meeting, and it was their, um, exciting news about the Mercy Center for Women, who will be, uh, inhabiting, uh, the Holy Rosary School that, um, wasn't getting much use, will be now, uh, very active, uh, in the community once again. So that's great. I attended the Planning Commission meeting, and, um, they have a lot going on, so, um, and that'll be coming up in the future, all the different things going on there. I won't really get into that right now, but, um, that was a really good meeting. Uh, thank you, Liz. Um, I got to sit on the land bank this year. We talked about how council people are able to go to, uh, various meetings regardless of who's the liaison. And so I had some free time and got to sit on the land bank. And, um, I like going to things that, uh, I don't know too much about, because that's knowledge, and knowledge is always good. I attended the Veterans Ceremony at the Jefferson School, and Bruce Gingrich has been doing, uh, the twenty-six or twenty-seven years of putting on a wonderful, wonderful, I really recommend that people go to that, because it really gives you an appreciation of our veterans. And all the veterans there that were in wheelchairs and couldn't stand when their part of the song was sung because of being in a wheelchair, um, and, uh, I thank our veterans that are here today, Kaz and Frank, I know, um, you have served. I also went to the Soldiers and Sailors Home. There's a Bayfront Parkway Connector Study, uh, they, I got it like a one-on-one thing, because it was like till nine o'clock in the morning and seven o'clock in the evening for like elected officials or people. And they want to slow down traffic from Twelfth Street to, um, the Bayfront there. And I really think that's a great idea, because they consider that a high-crash area, and pedestrians who try to cross four lanes of highway, they know that that is a safety issue, so they're addressing that. So that's a great thing. Um, I attended the Gem City Concert Band, and kudos to them. They meet throughout the year, and they put on a wonderful, wonderful concert for free, and it was at the Blasco Library, and it's just really great. I want to tell people who are snowplowers to get the word out that you are not allowed to block pedestrian sidewalk or where there would be, uh, pedestrians walking. Please note that you are, um, blocking, if you do block, you cannot do that. So pedestrians have safe travels, and happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Witherspoon.
I just told you. Thank you, Mr. President. I had a long conversation today on the phone with Mrs. Jessica Ball, uh, I believe live on Twenty-Second Street where we've been having all the issues. She's very concerned, continue to have the concerns, uh, of the individuals congregating, going on her porch, the neighbor's porch, urinating on their property, cutting, uh, slicing tires, et cetera. Now, she said that she contacted Pat Harkin's office, so I've talked with the representatives there. Pat has been in contact with the PLCB. They have informed Pat that it's not a bar, it's not a bottle club, therefore they don't have, uh, they can't shut him down. They, they aren't going to do anything, because the law don't allow them to do anything. They have met with the owner. The owner has agreed, uh, the next day after event, they were, go through the neighborhood. If there's bottles and beer cans laying on property, they were gonna, uh, pick it up. She says some of that has taken place, not all the time. My concern is that if in fact, God forbid, that there's gunplay, and a stray bully comes through the house with a child watching TV, I guarantee you, somewhere in the law, they will shut it down. Without a doubt, something's going to happen, and we need to figure out something before that happens. Again, they have met with the owners, um, representative and his office have met with the owners. There's no problems inside, but it's the clientele that is attracted to the place. My suggestion is that we place no loitering signs within a block and a half, two-block radius around there. Now, when our police officers arrive, they can move them out, because they are loitering. One incident, a gentleman came out of his house, told the guy to get off his porch, and the owner of the house ended up in the hospital with three broken ribs. Now, I'm going to tell you, you don't want to be on my porch, but then I'm going to jail. I'm going to jail, because I'm putting you off my porch. You don't know if he's on the porch smoking a cigarette, on the porch looking in my window at my kids, seeing if I'm home. We have to just research and research and see what we can do. My goal is not to put the owners out of business. My goal is to control that one or two-block radius when the event is over. We need to do something before something really, really bad happens. And so, uh, I'm talking with, uh, Mrs. Ball and, uh, representative's office. The only thing I can think of is, uh, putting a loitering sign, and hopefully that would give our officers a little more power to disperse, uh, individuals that are hanging out. I also had a meeting with Mr. Mike Fraley today, Executive Director of the Erie Housing Authority. Uh, some great things are about to happen with the Housing Authority. And I'm not going to, I promise I wouldn't spill the beans until he meet with his board tomorrow and give them the good news. But one of the good news would be a positive, uh, for the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Ms. Allen.
Okay. I was able to go to the Community College meeting, uh, the, I'm sorry, the State Board of Education meeting a week ago Wednesday. You know, they had a subcommittee meeting on Wednesday, and then the, uh, full board on Thursday, so I went on Wednesday. And I think everybody knows from the news reports, there was a great amount of support both days from people across the spectrum, including students who showed up to, um, articulate why we need the Community College. If you haven't had a chance, um, I recommend that you read the op-ed that was in the Erie Times News today by Bishop Brock and also Reverend Higginbottom, um, about the acknowledging the politics that are, have been holding this up. I mean, this is an equity issue for, uh, this, for Erie, for our community. There was a story today in the Chronicle of Higher Education about this issue, and I looked at the comments. There were only three comments, and they weren't, it wasn't like looking at social media where people go off the rails, but one person said, "Well, people in Erie can go to Edinburgh, that's affordable." So then I went and I looked at the Community College map for the state of Pennsylvania, and I looked at the, uh, Pashi map for the state of Pennsylvania, and I started doing distances, and there are other communities in Pennsylvania that have community colleges, and they also have state-supported schools within, um, you know, thirty or forty miles. So that is a wrong-headed argument. Anyhow, I'm getting passionate about that, just as I do sometimes at the land bank meetings, where I'm not a member of the land bank, I'm the liaison. Um, and I thank Kathy for coming to the meeting. I think I finally maybe was a, actually had a voice this past Monday, where, uh, there was a recommendation to reject a request from a woman who wanted to buy, uh, vacant property. She said she wanted to put, uh, swing sets up for her kids, and the reason it was recommended to be rejected was because she is a renter, and, uh, she rents from her brother, and he hasn't paid his property taxes. And I said, "Well, are you saying that a tenant cannot buy something from the land bank?" So I think I was persuasive at least that they tabled that, um, motion. And I said, "Why don't you invite her in as we do with repository sales, to have somebody come before the land bank and said, 'This is what I want, would like to do with this.'" So a small victory. I spoke to, um, again, in public policy class yesterday, there were high school students and college students in this class, and it was really amazing to me that the high school students were really well-prepared in terms of, in fact, one of the girls who spoke at the Community College event in Harrisburg was in this class. So, um, there's some really positive things going on with high school students in Erie from collegiate and from Erie High School, who happened to be in this class. They're paying attention to the issues, um, not just to the Community College, they're also paying attention to, uh, the Erie Coke Plant and sustainability issues. So we have some really good future leaders coming down the road. And my last thing is, I, I know I've talked before about baseball, and I know that, you know, the people are trying to be cautiously optimistic that the baseball, uh, double-A team is going to stay here. I've been reading everything I possibly can as this issue has been covered. I will say that in the state of New York, that the mayor of, uh, Binghamton had a very strong, uh, news conference speaking out about this. I just read a quote today from somebody from Major League Baseball, who did not sound at all optimistic that these teams are going to be saved. So I've been thinking about the advice that my former boss used to give. He used to say, "There are no problems, only challenges." So, and I think it might be possibly because of the Harry T. Burley stuff that we're doing here. I really do think we need to think beyond, if we do not have a double-A baseball team, but we're going to have a baseball stadium that has twelve million dollars in state funding in there, we need to think of what else that can be used for. And one of the things I've been thinking above, about as I was driving down to City Hall today is Erie's, uh, legacy with, uh, the Negro Leagues. I know we have Pontiac Field, but let's think beyond that. And I also was thinking about adaptive baseball. And I'm thinking about that, because I've seen one adaptive baseball game played there every year. Erie has a great, um, kindness in our heart for people who have intellectual disabilities. And I think that, so I guess I'm saying, if it comes to pass that Major League Baseball yanks that, that team out of here, we need to think, now what? It also is going to impact our amusement tax, that's why I was asking it at the budget session, how it's broken down by venue, and in, uh, in terms of the LST tax and the EIT
She got the point.
I couldn't find the stop button. I'm sorry, Liz.
You can finish, Liz.
I'm fine, I'm done. I only have four things.
Thank you. Uh, my little time here I'm going to use is mainly, once again, with the budget. I appreciate the mayor and the administration working out a potential deal with the Water Authority of possibly getting some upfront lease money, as all of us don't agree how all that's going to play out in this. It does open up options where at least we're fortunate enough that there's a few dollars out there that could be beneficial to this budget, this town, and hopefully budgets beyond. Uh, what we need to realize is, uh, ninety million upfront, if you go with, uh, the four million average we would normally get over that thirty years, that would equal a hundred twenty million. So it's a give-and-take type thing, we would take a hit, taking some money upfront. But with that being said, paying down the debt, we're going to save money down the road. So all those numbers got to be worked together, which makes more work for Mr. Lichtenwalter. all those numbers got to be worked together, which makes more work for Mr. Lichtenwalter. And gives us more questions as a council on where we go or how we can best utilize it in, like I say, this current budget as well as budgets beyond. Other than that, we'll be back at it again tomorrow night. And something tells me tomorrow night will not be the last night of our budget deliberations. Tomorrow during the day, sometime I'll get together with my colleagues and we'll try to figure out a additional dates on when we will be having deliberations and we'll go from there. But once again, really appreciate the administration's due diligence as council. We still have a lot of work and questions and, uh, but, uh, we'll get it done. Last thing we want to do is raise fees and taxes. As not only are they your taxes, they're our taxes too, as we live in this town also, but, uh, we're, we are working for you. Uh, with that, we'll go to our city controller, Ms. Stankiewicz.
I don't have any report other than if anybody wants to see the, or the reports.
All right. Thank you. Mayor.
I'll be brief, but, uh, had the opportunity to visit Bishop Brock's Eagles Nest, uh, yesterday. And he is now educating sixty students from Erie Public Schools over there. They're in, uh, four classes. There's two that are all girls and two that are all boys. And I think they're basically, uh, ten and eleven-year-olds. And I had great conversations with them. Was very impressed, uh, with what's, with what's going on there. Uh, just as an example, in the classroom of boys, every boy had a white, a white shirt on with a tie and all the ties matched. And I can tell you in all four classes, when I went into them, they were so well behaved. They were working hard. They were learning a lot. It's, it's really incredible, uh, what he's doing over there. So if you have a chance sometime, I'm sure he'd welcome you guys over to, to, uh, to see that. Our press conference will be tomorrow at ten AM and certainly you're all welcome to, to attend. And, uh, one of the things we'll be announcing is the new fire chief. Also, I want to thank all of you for your work on the budget and the conversations have, have been great and good, good back and forth. And I really believe this budget could be, uh, very transformational in terms of Erie's future. And I'm not talking just the next couple of years. Talking thirty, forty, fifty years down the road. Uh, in fact, you know, one of the conservative calculations that, that I've shared with you that we've done is that over the next thirty years, this budget will save taxpayers over a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars. That's more than five point two million dollars a year in savings. So look forward to continuing to work with you on it. Thanks very much for your work. Unfortunately, tomorrow night I have to go to the 2019 Niagara Awards. Uh, so I won't be here for that, but my team will be here. And I look forward to meetings next week. Thanks, Liz.
Rose, you have anything to say?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll, we'll adjourn.
City Council adjourns at nine twelve. Mr. Wunarsky, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Ms. Kowalski, Ms. Schough, Mr. Weatherstone.